And also, I would like to point out that how in this world can you compare a child to an inanimate object like a car inside a garage? That truly was offensive to me as well. So, thank you, Mrs. Schmidt, for stepping forward. I support she does. I do share her opinion. Thank you.
Can I also make it clear?
Yes, Mrs. Dennis Cullen.
I would just like to say that I'm concerned about the privacy of all students in this school, in this district. And I don't think that we, as a board, should favor the privacy of any students over any other students. And I think that a decision needs to be made, and again, I'm speaking only for myself as well. But I think that something needs to be done here to assure that all students in this district have the opportunity to feel like their privacy needs are met. Because I don't think that anyone, whether they are male or female, in the locker rooms should feel uncomfortable changing in front of anyone else. And so, I think that whether they're transgender students or not transgender students, we need to make sure that every one of those students were meeting all of their privacy needs. In my opinion, we should be expanding, you know, we have two bathrooms that are in close proximity to the locker rooms. If Title IX is going in the direction that it's going, I think that we need to expand our changing, allow students to also change in those bathrooms. That way, every student can change independently and not feel uncomfortable changing in front of anyone else. That way, everyone's privacy needs are being met. I also have concerns about the individual user bathrooms at the high school. I have safety concerns with bolting two doors shut and putting locks on the doors and allowing students to be able to lock themselves in a bathroom in the high school. We don't know what's going on in there. I understand there's cameras outside of that, those bathrooms. But you can all use your imaginations. I'm not going to suggest things. But clearly, they're high school students, and if there's an area where you know that you can lock yourself in and have ultimate privacy, you're at a higher risk for something bad happening and engaging in things that you shouldn't be able to engage in on school property. And in my opinion, that is a major safety concern for me, and I'm not in favor of that.
Excuse me.
Did somebody else want to speak? Ms. Cullen, you can go ahead. I can wait until the end. Go ahead.
So, I, you know, I heard, and I understand, Suzanne and I talked about it earlier, actually. I have three sons. My oldest is in college now. I also have two daughters. But in defense of everyone, I think this is a delicate topic. And I do think that we need to worry about the, not worry about, but consider the safety of all of the students, the girls and the boys. I do think that boys can be just as sensitive as girls, or, you know, and could be uncomfortable in certain situations. So, we do have to consider that. But I just think that it would do as well to have discussion about it. And I think that that's what's coming out here. And we've talked about it before. And I would just encourage everyone to just kind of consider the feelings of all people when you're speaking. And I know Mr. Edwards personally, and I'm sure that he doesn't, you know, it's not that he's trying to offend or that he's trying to say something derogative about the boys in our school. It's just, it's just what people think about for the current situation that they happen to be in. So, I have both boys and girls. I think about both of them. He also has boys and girls, but the primary concern is for daughters. So, you know, just if everyone could think about what their situation is and how it might impact something else and not make judgments about each other, that would be good.
Can I just offer one, my problems will be one second. I really think, and I mentioned this in an email, I really think education is key. And I'm, again, asking the administration to offer education to the families, for the communities, for us, not in a boardroom, but open to the public and have speakers come in, explain the definition, the court cases, where we stand, and what should be our next step. Everybody's, you know, fighting our, so we're fighting out of a wet paper bag with that information. So, I really am strongly encouraging the administration to offer some education. Thank you. Just one sentence that I'll add, just to put everybody at ease. I did speak to Mr. Bonner today at the high school. We have been in school for four weeks, and we have not had any issues with restrooms or locker rooms.
Dr. Yarne, to the rest of the board and to members of the public. I guess what I should start with is by saying that with all due respect to Mr. Edwards, whose views I appreciate, I think that the issue is both more complicated in a way than he suggests, and in a sense, also less complicated. It's more complicated than he would suggest in ascertaining what the law requires right But as the solicitor to the school district, once I ascertain what I believe the law requires based on research and diligence, then my job, in a lot of ways, is actually quite easy. It's to tell the board what the law is, not what I think it should be from a personal perspective. And then, within that context of what the law is, present the school district with its options. And so, let's start with what the law is at this point on September 26, 2016, in my opinion. The Penridge School District is a recipient of federal funds. And so, therefore, it is bound by the provisions of what's become known as Title IX, which is a federal statute. And what Title IX says is basically that any kind of sex discrimination in educational programming, including athletic programming, including almost all aspects of educational life, is prohibited. There has been, in recent months and years, some confusion as to what Title IX requires with respect to transgender students. And there have been court cases about it that have come down one way. There have been court cases about the issue that have come down another way. Many of those cases are completely irreconcilable with one another. So, there's been an atmosphere of confusion. In July, in May of 2016, the Department of Education, which is the federal agency tasked with both implementing Title IX and enforcing it, issued guidance, which said that discrimination against transgender students based on their transgender status would be treated by the Department of Education as a violation of Title IX. It went on to say, in its guidance, that the, that the, that a transgender student who notifies his or her school district, or if the student is a minor, their parent notifies the school district, that they are a transgender student, they have the right under Title IX to use bathroom and locker room facilities that align with their gender identity. So, that's what the main regulatory agency says with respect to Title IX. There has been some discussion that Penridge School District doesn't have a policy at all with respect to this issue, which isn't exactly correct. Penridge School District, as a recipient of Title IX funds, has a policy which explicitly says it will comply with what Title IX requires. And so, in May of 2016, when the Department of Education issued that guidance, the most legally sound interpretation as of that time, in my view, as to what Title IX required, was accommodation for transgender students who identify to the district as transgender, and it requires accommodation in the ways, in terms of facility and locker room usage and other aspects of their educational life. There have been cases on both sides of the issue, both prior to the Department of Education guidance and after the Department of Education guidance. There were cases before the Department of Education guidance that seemed to hold that those kinds of accommodations for transgender students are not required under Title IX. There were cases before the Title IX guidance from the Department of Education, which suggests that Title IX did require those kinds of accommodations. Similarly, after the Department of Education guidance was issued in May of 2016, there have been cases on both sides. There is a case that came out of the Fourth Circuit in either Virginia or Maryland, known as the GG case, the student's initials. The Fourth Circuit, a circuit court of appeals in the United States, held that the Department of Education's guidance was lawful and that its, the Department of Education's position with respect to Title IX was entitled to due deference. And so, the Fourth Circuit explicitly held that that guidance was legal and proper. There was then a case out of Texas, where a Texas judge, on the eve of the start of the school year in Texas, held that the Department of Education had overstepped its authority. That guidance was improper, and he issued an injunction with respect to the guidance. So, there are all these conflicting court cases. And with respect to the Fourth Circuit decision, which hold in favor of the Department of Education's interpretation, that case is likely headed up to the United States Supreme Court, and I would anticipate a clarifying ruling, one way or another, in 2017, if not before. But so, what does all this mean? It means that the court, the court cases are all over the place. But you have the main regulatory agency telling the Penridge School District and every other school district that receives federal funds that this is what Title IX requires. And so, in the absence of a clear ruling from a court clearly having jurisdiction over Penridge School District, i.e. the Eastern District of Pennsylvania, the Third Circuit, or the United States Supreme Court, my advice has been, and will continue to be, until that point in time, that the district abide by the guidelines that are being set by the regulatory agency with respect to Title IX. That is legally the most defensible, soundest approach to take. So, that's my assessment of what the law today requires. And that's the complicated part for the reasons I've just tried to summarize. Once I, as solicitor for the school district, reach that conclusion, my recommendation is simple, because my advice is to follow the law without regard to what I, or Mr. Edwards, or Mr. Lucas, or anyone else thinks. And I acknowledge it's an issue about which reasonable people can disagree. So, if we, if we, if I've established that Title IX requires accommodation for transgender students, as I believe it does, then the district has several options. It can follow Title IX, which I've, which is what I've advised the district to do. It could decide to not follow Title IX. And let me say this, if the district's approach is to just simply follow Title IX, it doesn't have to do anything beyond what it's already done, because it has a policy that says to follow Title IX. If the district were to take an approach that it would not abide by Title IX and/or the Department of Education interpretation of it, then it could pass a policy saying, "We're not going to comply with the Department of Education's interpretation." And that policy will be read for litigation, in my opinion. It will be subject to a lawsuit in the Eastern District of Pennsylvania under Title IX, that the district has violated Title IX. I've defended Title IX cases in the Eastern District. They are difficult and expensive to defend. It requires tremendous resources. They are, it is a gut-wrenching experience for the administrators involved. I think it will also lead to a lawsuit in the Eastern District under Section 1983 of the United States Code, which allows for lawsuits against individual members of a municipal body or a school district, where the plaintiff asserts that that individual individually is violating a constitutional civil liberty that they should have known about. So, exposes administrators individually, I believe, if not the board, individually to potential Section 1983 liability. And so, I advise against that. Another option would be to sue the Department of Education in the Eastern District of Pennsylvania, if the district wants to avoid complying with its interpretation of Title IX. Again, that's a board decision to make, but I would advise against it on the basis that it is incredibly expensive to do so and requires expending a tremendous amount of financial and administrative resources. It doesn't seem worth it to me. That's a board decision. And then, the fourth option is to simply opt out of federal funding, at which point Title IX would not be binding by the school board, on the school district. But so, with all of that framed, with all of that framed, my advice is, my advice has been, the district has a policy that says it will abide by Title IX. As long as it has that policy, it's required to accommodate transgender students in accordance with the Department of Education guidance until the Department of Education withdraws that guidance or a court of competent jurisdiction over Penridge says that that guidance was improper. And so, to that, to that extent, my, getting to what the law requires was, was a time-consuming and complicated endeavor, I felt, leaving Mr. Edwards disagreed. What to do once I reach the conclusion as to what the law required was not complicated. So, if there are questions from board members, I'm happy to try to address them. But that's my view of Title IX right now. If there are no questions, we'll move on to the consent calendar. So, are there any of the items on the consent calendar that board members want moving on separately? So, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar as listed in the agenda? I'll take Mr. Rigomo as first, move Mrs. Schmidt as the second. Okay? The consent calendar has been moved and seconded by Mr. Rigomo and Mrs. Schmidt. Are there comments or questions by board members on the consent calendar items? If not, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next item on the agenda is the Student Liaison Report. We have two representatives tonight. So, Mr. Carey, are you taking the lead on this?
Yes, I am, and I would like to thank the board for welcoming me back for this awesome school year that I'm sure will be great. From Student Council, October 7th is going to be our pink-out game, and October 15th is the homecoming dance. And I'd like to introduce our Penridge High School President, Dennis Bruslin.
Hey, thank you again for taking the time. I really appreciate, just the end of the year, me and a couple of my officers, we got the honor and privilege of meeting with some of you guys. And hey, and it was really nice to meet you guys, and we really took into consideration what you guys said. And so, we got right on it. We got an amazing team set up, led by Evan. We're gonna have, our goal is to have different members of the council to attend the committee meetings, as well as the general meetings, so they can give their feedback from students, and you can ask them questions, and, you know, that's the missing piece of the puzzle, is that. So, look forward to a great year, and thank you.
Thank you very much, and we look forward to having you return and attend our meetings. So, and good luck with the school year, Mr. Bruslin, as the president of the senior class. I think that's an important position. Next, in terms, since we had a long public comment period tonight, I'm going to dispense with most of what normally is under the president's report. I will report that in terms of the right-to-know requests, we had one new request since August 20th, and the legal fees for August were $493, and there are no outstanding right-to-know invoices, which is good news. The other thing is the Safety Committee. Mr. Loffler and Mrs. Percoler.
Okay, thank you. And I will also try to keep this brief. September 13th, the Safety Committee met. Meeting was called for order at 1:35 by Ms. Paul Coner. We had nine members present. The minutes from the May meeting were reviewed, and they were approved. Maintenance, monthly school inspections. Mr. Bogan read the inspection reports that were held at Guth Elementary and North Middle School. There were no major infractions with the inspection. There's no follow-up needed. Transportation reported. Transportation is seeking volunteers for safety inspection drivers to be held September 19th and 23rd. Nurse?
Who's in charge of facilities?
Looks like we lost everybody. All right, I'll talk loudly. I'll finish up, and I'll go look. Nurse Coordinator, Michelle, reported that they will be looking for some AEDs to purchase additionally. Nutritional services, there was no reports given. Athletics, bus vandalism while returning from a sporting event. Old business, we were talking about PA systems and, sorry, a lot of confusion going on, but anyway. Want me to go look at that first and finish this, or should I keep going? Okay. So, old business, we were talking about when the panic button's pushed, and that we have a long delay for that communication from the monitoring company to get to 911. They did put a call into our monitoring company. They took that call, and they put it at a high priority. So, at this point, that call should be the highest priority that 911 can get. So, that has been taken care of. Also, we put a new PA system in for security reasons at Sarsau Elementary under the capital improvement this year. Along with that, we're putting in a new timer that when you do push the panic button, that the alarm will sound throughout the school for 30 seconds. Before it just continued to sound, it just continued while the police came, until you were able to unreset it in two different areas. Now, it's a 30-second timer. It will go off. At that point, you will now have communication with either your phone system or with the PA system. So, we're gonna be switching that over next week for a test. Following that up the following week, hopefully, we're gonna have a PA, something that our walkie-talkies will interface with. So, again, once the 30 seconds is timed out on the panic button, now the walkie-talkies will also be, have a frequency that will tune into the PA system, so there can be communication throughout the school with our walkie-talkies that already exist. Facility manager outside in playground areas can see something. He can make the call on a walkie-talkie, or the nurse, or somebody in the front of the We had Kyle Stewart from Risk Management show up. He is our claim service. He did a quick report on our last three years at the school. And luckily enough, over, from July of '14 to June of 2016, we've had 100 slip and falls. From a year ago, we went from 51 in 2014 to 47 in 2015. And this year, we're only up to two, but that's only from July till September. So, we're showing a small amount of gain on slip and falls. Most of them are really slip and falls, curb trips, stairs, slippery floors, things like that. So, the next meeting will be held on October 11th at 1:30 here in the LBI room. Any questions?
Thank you.
Oh, you want?
We're back home. We don't have any additional things coming from my end. Jeff and I have been working together on a number of things within the building, making sure everything's in place, so that the security can be heard at any level of the building, as well as throughout the district. So, one building can communicate now with other buildings in case their power does go out or their security system is down. We can communicate district-wide, so that we can then set it.
Thank you. Superintendent's report, Dr. Rattigan.
Okay, so, thank you first to the Guth Elementary School for the District Office Meeting Room Display, to Connects Company and the Roden Group for a donation of 30 tubs of Connects to Dibbler Elementary School, and to the United Way for a donation of 40 backpacks for some of our needy students. So, we're greatly appreciative of all of those. A few points of pride, we received some wonderful news about our girls' swimming team. The August issue of Swimming World Magazine includes the high school national championship rankings. Brittany Weiss, who graduated in June, was ranked seventh in the country in the 100-yard backstroke and 11th in the 100-yard butterfly. The relay team of Brittany Weiss, Hannah Zermol, who also graduated, and sophomores Anna Benno and Morgan Scott was third in the 200-yard freestyle relay and eighth in the 400-yard freestyle relay. Overall, the Penridge girls' team was tied for fourth nationally in the combined public independent schools category and tied for second in public schools. So, congratulations to the ladies, and good luck to Anna and Morgan in the upcoming season. Last Thursday, our students and staff joined some 50,000 groups in 80 countries in a global event developed to explore the development of character from different perspectives. Character Day, now in its third year, is an opportunity for students to learn how we begin to develop character traits at a young age, and how these traits can play a body role in the success students experience both in school and in life. The activities fit in nicely with our Takes Pride theme and the emphasis that the district is placing on social and emotional learning in the curriculum K-12. After watching short, award-winning films on the topic, teachers used pre-printed class discussion materials and resources rooted in evidence-based research that explores important questions such as, "Who am I? Who do I want to be in the world? How can I develop the character strengths of resilience, grit, empathy, courage, humor, curiosity, et cetera, that will make me a successful person?" So far, feedback has been unanimously positive. In fact, some students and teachers have expressed to me that we should have developed or devoted more times to the activities. So, next year, we'll look at ways to expand our involvement in the day. And congratulations to one of our seniors, Mariah Bryson, for being named Student of the Month for September at the Upper Bucks Technical School. Mariah has already completed all of her license requirements in the cosmetology program and is preparing for the board, so she can be certified before she graduates. She's in the process of lining up a co-op job at a local salon. Mariah is extremely active with Skills USA and with Key Club Exec Council and the yearbook here at the high school. After she graduates, she's looking to move to Virginia or North Carolina, where she hopes to transfer her cosmetology license and apply to college to pursue a law degree. And speaking of our Takes Pride theme, the October theme will be acceptance. Students will be reminded that acceptance is a favorable reception or approval. When you demonstrate acceptance of others, you acknowledge them even if you do not agree or have different beliefs. Individuals who are accepting of others take the time to listen and respect the point of view of others. And that seems to be very fitting with tonight's discussion. In the essence of time, Dr. Yarne, we will show the Takes Pride video the next time.
Thank you, Dr. Rattigan. We will move to the committee reports. And with the indulgence of the board, in particular, Mr. Rigomo, I'd like to move the Personnel Committee report first, since we have some individuals in the audience awaiting the outcome of some of those motions.
As you wish, Dr. Yarne. The Personnel Committee met on September 14, 2016. There are eight motions for upper approval this evening. The first is a motion to approve the certification stipends of operations and transportation department employees.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Cullen. Moved and seconded to approve the certification stipends for the operations and transportation department employees. Comments, questions to board members? Not all those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Mr. Rigomo?
The second motion is- The second motion is to approve amendment to extend agreement with Source for Teachers through June 30th, 2017, and proposed substitute rates.
Do we have a second to that motion? Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Moved and seconded to approve the Source for Teachers agreement and the substitute rates. Comments or questions for board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Mr. Rigomo?
Third motion is to approve revised job description for the position of Director of Transportation.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Casper. Moved and seconded to approve a revised job description for the Director of Transportation. Comments, questions for board members? Not? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Mr. Rigomo?
The fourth moti, the fourth motion is to approve Raptor Volunteer Module at a cost of $1,600.
Thank you. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Casper. Moved and seconded to approve the Raptor Volunteer Module. Comments or questions for board members? No? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Mr. Rigomo?
The fifth motion is to appoint Brian Geiger as Director of Transportation effective September 27, 2016.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, I'll take Mrs. Miller in this case. Moved and seconded to approve Mr. Geiger as the Director of Transportation. Comments or questions for board members? Not? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Mr. Geiger, do you have anything to say? Sounds like you have your work cut out for you after tonight's discussion.
And you've already started.
Oh, yes. I know Sheldon had told me that I'd be asked to say a few words. I said, "How about thanking you?" But no, really, it's been a pleasure the last 13 months working here as the interim director, and I'm very happy that I've been voted in as your new director.
Thank you, and best wishes.
Thanks.
I'm sure you'll hear from people if it doesn't go as well as they like.
Yeah, usually that's what happens. The solution isn't what they want to hear, you hear more.
Okay. Mr. Rigomo?
Thank you. The sixth motion is to appoint Jessica Schurt as Assistant Director of Transportation effective September 27, 2016.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Cullen. Moved and seconded to approve Ms. Schurt as the Director of Trans, Assistant Director of Transportation, pardon me. Comments, questions for board members? No? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. You two have got the opportunity to come to the podium. Introduce yourself, or at least say what you'd like to say.
I'm just very happy to have the opportunity. I'm excited to take on some of the transportation challenges that we've come up upon this year, so I'm also very proud to be part of the Penridge team, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rigomo?
Thank you. The seventh motion is to appoint Stephanie Washam as the K-25 Humanities Language Arts Supervisor effective on earliest availability.
Thank you. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Moved and seconded to approve Ms. Washam as the K-25 Humanities Language Arts Supervisor. Comments or questions for board members? No? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Are you in the audience? Yes, you are, I believe.
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity, and I am very excited to be joining the Penridge community. I actually grew up here as a child, so to be coming back to a district where I went to Evans Elementary is a great thing for me. So I'm excited to be working alongside everyone.
Thank you, and welcome back. Mr. Rigomo?
Thank you. The eighth motion is to approve the hiring of 11 permanent substitute teachers through Source for Teachers at a rate of $110 per day per substitute teacher.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Moved and seconded to approve 11 permanent substitute teachers for the year. Comments or questions for board members? Yes, Mrs. Yardle?
Yeah, I have a question. Is this in addition to permanent substitutes that we already have, or is this the total number for the year?
We are asking the board for an additional two substitutes. There were nine last year, so now we're asking for an additional two that would be placed on the elementary level.
Okay, and so that's why this is, we already have nine working, so we're adding two more?
It's a motion that's approved yearly for the permanent substitutes, but this year we're asking for two additional, so there'll be now five covering these seven elementary schools.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the motion? No? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Mr. Rigomo?
Thank you, and the next Personnel Committee is scheduled to meet, actually, the, it has listed as October the 9th. We are scheduling one for, oh, pardon, November the 9th. We are scheduling one for October the 5th for the next Personnel meeting.
Thank you. Next committee will be Activities.
Mrs. Yardle? Thank you. The Activities Committee met on September 14th, and we have three motions tonight which reflect the discussions that we had that evening. So the first motion is to approve the following overnight trip requests, A through D.
Do we have a second to approval of the overnight trip requests listed in motion? Thank you, Mr. Rigomo. Moved and seconded to approve these overnight trip requests. Comments or questions for board members? No? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Mrs. Yardle?
The second motion is to approve overnight shirts for the Penridge High School and Middle School teams and activities that may qualify for postseason competition slash invitation that will require overnight stays and are recommended by the administration, and it's followed by letters A through G. And the high school and middle schools will provide information to the board on all students who qualify and attend these competitions slash conferences.
Comments or questions? I'm sorry, a second on this motion?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Cullen. Moved and seconded to approve the overnight trips in the general sense for the high school and middle school teams and activities. Comments, questions for board members? No? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Mrs. Yardle?
Okay, and the third motion is to recommend approval of the proposed program changes for the 2016-17 aquatics programs and the prices listed in the agenda.
Do we have a second to that motion? Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Moved and seconded to approve program changes and pricing for the 2016-17 aquatics program. Comments or questions for board members?
I have a comment.
Mr. Bas, Casper, sorry.
Okay. We talked about this, I'm glad they're trying to keep the water pool going because it's doing, you know, it's a feeder program for the school, but I would like to see if they can somehow still try to figure out, I'm gonna support the motion, but to just have that program November through May, I just think that there's some way to find some room in there for the public to get in that pool over those seven months, so that's what the comment. I hope they'll go back to the drawing board and figure that one out.
Thank you, Rither. Thank you. Are there other comments or questions on this motion? No? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Mrs. Yardle?
Okay, the next Activities Committee meeting is scheduled for November 9th, 2016.
Thank you. Curriculum, the Curriculum Committee did meet on September 14th, 2016. Two motions resulted from that night. Great deal of discussion that might have to do with our